I want to remind everyone, if you wish to speak, to go ahead and sign this petition. Looks like everyone that here that wants to speak has signed the petition. Thank you. Or not petition, I'm sorry. Wishing to sign to speak on what's being presented to the board. Just remember, please keep your guys' comments respectful and brief. And we will go ahead and open the meeting for March 12th. Can I get a roll call, please?
Mike Nichols.
Here.
Scott Highlander.
Here.
Sam Payne.
Yeah.
Charles Bates.
Here.
Isaac Chavez.
Present. All right, moving forward, we'll go ahead and take a look at the minutes. We have minute, more than a couple of minutes over the last few months that we need to get a vote for. That is for November 13th, January 8th, and February 12th. Not everybody was at each, so we'll have to do these individually. Go ahead and open a motion to the board to approve minutes for November 13th.
I'll make the motion. We approve the board minutes from November 13th.
I'll second. Roll call, please.
Mike Nichols.
Aye.
Scott Highlander.
Aye.
Isaac Chavez.
Aye.
Sam Payne.
Aye.
Charles Bates.
What do I say since I wasn't there?
I abstain.
I abstain.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, thanks.
All right, moving forward, we'll go ahead and open a motion to the board for the minutes for January 8th.
I'll make a motion. We approve the January 8th meetings. Minutes, brother.
I'll second.
Okay, first in a second. You can get roll call, please.
Mike Nichols.
Aye.
Scott Highlander.
Aye.
Sam Payne.
Aye.
Charles Bates.
Aye.
Isaac Chavez.
And this, in January the 8th, Don, is that the one we had been, changed the, we had to change the findings in?
Yes.
Shouldn't we have read those findings that had been changed before we approved the minutes?
Were they, were they changed in the minutes, Grace?
Yes.
I think that maybe the discussion we should have is the fact that the findings that you wanted me to, to change on, I couldn't get changed, but we changed a, a different findings that then made this go away or go bad. So maybe the, the issue that needed to be discussed here is that we, you didn't, you, we didn't go with the findings that you wanted. We went with a, a different set of finding or different category to make the finding. The same thing came to a play, but we just didn't change the one because I, there's no way I could make that happen.
Okay, so what was the difference?
I think that one that you wanted me to change was the one that actually gave the reason for it to occur. But there was, I think, the second finding, let me see if it'd be the same on here, which would be the proposal shall not involve any element or cause any condition that may be dangerous. I think we changed that one versus the, the, the last one, which basically said that it had to do with off-street parking, did the last one do? The proposed shall use, the proposed you shall promote the objectives of this ordinance. So there was, I, I'm not for sure now which one, but it was one that you asked me to change. When I got back the next day, it was like, man, there's no way I can make, make this wrong because it's probably the only reason it's right. So I changed one that I know we could make that you did not tell me to do. So that's, that's the, that's the, the consequences, that's the thing that we needed to have adjusted, saying that you guys are okay with the finding that we changed. I hope that all came out right.
I was kind of confused in the first part.
Okay. As long as we're, as long as we're good.
All right, taking a look at the minutes from February 12th, go ahead and open a motion to the board.
I'll make a motion. We approve the minutes from February 12th.
I'll second.
All right, first in a second. You can get roll call, please.
Mike Nichols.
Aye.
Sam Payne.
Aye.
Scott Highlander.
Abstain.
Isaac Chavez.
Aye.
Charles Bates.
All right, moving forward, just want to double check with the board that there's no conflict of interest with the petitions being presented tonight. All right, hearing none, we'll move forward. Just double checking that nobody on the board has any contact with said petitioners before us this evening. All right, hearing none. We'll go ahead and take a look at new business for public hearing, doc eight, 2025 dash 003. The petitioner is Gracie Baldairis requesting a special exception to allow the construction of a duplex on a B residential district. Mr. Don Stock, can we have the staff report, please?
Thank you, Mr. President. The address is 757 West Green Street, Frankfurt, Indiana. Gracie Baldairis is the applicant. The site characteristics are, the request is located beginning at a point in the south line of Green Street in the city of Frankfurt, Indiana, 66 feet east of the intersection of the south line of said Green Street, with the east line of Rossville Avenue, formerly Barnersville gravel road, and running thus east on the south line of said Green Street, 56 feet, thence south, 153 feet to the north line of an alley, as now established, thence west on the north line of said alley, 56 feet to a point 66 feet east of the east line of said Rossville Avenue, thus north, 153 feet to the place of beginning, being a part of the east half of the southwest quarter of section three in township 21, North Range Line One West, commonly known as 757 West Green Street here in Frankfurt, Indiana. The petitioner is requesting a special exception for the approval of a duplex and a B residential district. Unified Development Ordinance references Article 11 definitions dwelling, two-family duplex, a building located on a single lot containing two dwelling units arranged one above the other or side by side and occupied by not more than two families. Land use table, appendix A, 2.02 dwelling, single family, attached for sale or rent, special exception in the B residential. The request analyst in the UDO, section 20311, special exceptions. From case arising within their territorial jurisdiction, the Board of Zoning Appeals shall approve or deny all special exceptions from their terms of zoning ordinance, but only in the classes of case and/or in the particular situations specified in the zoning ordinance. The Board may impose reasonable conditions and/or comments as pursuant to Indiana Code A special exception shall be approved under the section if, after a public hearing, the Board makes findings of facts in writing that one, their proposed use conforms to the district provision in which it will be located and all general regulations of this ordinance. The total lot size of this will be approximately 56 by 155 feet or 8,680 square feet with a 55-foot of frontage. Our Unified Development Order requires a minimum of 7,200 square feet and a 60-foot frontage. It has enough perv, pervious surface to allow four off-street parking spaces. It will meet all general regulations of this ordinance. Two, the proposed use shall not involve any element or cause any conditions that may be dangerous, injurious, or noxious to any other property of or persons, and shall comply within the performance standards herein. The proposed duplex will not involve any element or cause any conditions that may be dangerous, injurious, or noxious to any other property or persons, and it shall comply with the performance standards herein. Three, the proposed use shall be sighted, oriented, and landscaped so that the relationship of its buildings and grounds, adjacent buildings and properties, does not impair the health, safety, general welfare, or comfort, and does not adversely affect the values of the adjacent properties. The duplex, the duplex will be landscaped around the perimeter of the building as required by Table C, required buffer yards on page M27 of the Unified Development Ordinance, and the owner will be required to comply with illustration one on page M28. The proposed use shall produce a total environmental effect that is consistent with and not harmful to the environment of the neighborhood and will not impede the normal and orderly development and improve the surrounding properties for use already legally permitted in the district. Surrounding this lot are at least two family, two-family rentals and one single-family rental, and Gracie Baldairis' construction company on the back side. Adding a duplex that will meet all of the required building elements and adding off-street parking and sidewalks should enhance the neighborhood. Five, the proposed use shall organize vehicular access and no parking to minimize conflicting traffic movement on adjacent streets. With the alley located in the rear of the property and Gracie placing a driveway in front, parking should not add any difficulties along West Street. I made this findings before I saw the drawings, and as you have the drawing in front of you, you now notice that there'll be parking in the front part of this, of this property as the duplex is going to get placed towards the back of the property. Because of that, and not in the back, it's still going to be fine because each, each apartment is required to have two off-street parking facilities, and so she'll, she'll reach that in the front, not in the back. The proposed use has taken or will take adequate measures to provide utilities, access road, drainage, and other necessary facilities. This property had a home demolished before the building, this, before building this proposed duplex. Adequate measures to provide utility, drainage, and other necessary facilities like off-street parking have been considered. The proposed use shall promote the objectives of this ordinance and shall consist and be consistent with the City of Frankfurt's comprehensive plan. The UDO requires that duplexes be placed in B residential districts by special exception. The City of Frankfurt needs good rental homes, and this neighborhood supports a duplex as it already has rental property in the neighborhood. The recommendation is that the special exception should be approved subject to the findings of facts and staff report. Gracie Baldairis is here for any questions, and I am open to questions at this time.
What is the proposed square footage of each of the units? I see a total of 1440 for the two. Does that, I mean, is it 720 per unit?
Yes, we have not decided yet exactly how much we're really close to. We're on, uh, three bedroom apartment in each one, and it would be a two-story, so it would not be.
Okay.
Does there be a lot of yard in the back?
I might, yeah, I do. If she divides it in half.
So your, the, the, the plan is a two-story?
No, 3,600 square feet each. I thought it was what it said.
Cause the, the minimum living area per unit is 1,200 in B residential? Is, do we know if that alley, Sam? You're gonna have to go back in time with me. Do you remember when we had issues with this alley because there was a fence blocking it?
Yep. That was supposed, that alley was supposed to be vacated.
That's what I was wondering.
And then back over to the property. I don't know, I don't know if that happened or not, but that alley that runs back through there when, oh, man, I, it's been, I'm like, Charles, I gotta go back. There was some problems with people cutting through there, going from one street to the other street.
That when there was the mobile trailer park back there?
Yeah, so they put that fence across. And when they put that fence across back there, they kept pulling down in there and going back to the fence, and they kept cutting through the fence, and we was having all kinds of issues with trespassing and what have you going into the mobile home park. And I think, Gracie, some of it may have even been after you guys purchased, there was people going back there. So the city said, we're not maintaining that alley no more because it's not an alley usable. And the last I heard, they were supposed to give them that back.
Well, even if it was vacated, now that the parking is going to be in the front, the alley doesn't, won't play a factor with this property.
I just noticed on Beacon that the property directly.
Good call, I didn't know any of that.
The property directly to the west shows that the alley is no longer, like it's now part of that parcel, and the rest aren't. So I just didn't know.
That's what it was supposed to have happened, yes.
It's a good move that Gracie put all of her parking to the front.
We had another place.
We have been big problems.
Charles, you said, you said that the minimum space in a duplex can only be 1,200 feet on each side?
No, that's so on page C6, table B, in B residential, the prescribed minimum total living area per unit is 1,200. And I just, with the outline of the building being 1440, I wanted to.
That was just the bottom part. I mean, it's gonna be a two-story, so.
So the plan is two-story with, and Don, that's something that through the blueprinting process, you'd ensure that that was?
Yeah, we do. And, and I, I know that when we had that discussion that we would reach that, if the property is a double up in our second floor, if, if the houses, if this property is divided in half, you're looking at, let me just see if I can multiply that by two. You're looking at about 1,344 per, per apartment if there's, if there's two stories. At 60, 672 per, per landing.
Don, it, it, the question I have is you're, you're supposed to have 60 feet for each.
So the UDO addresses that, a great question, Sam, and, and that is, because of the UDO, it talks about the fact that there are lots that don't meet the requirement. But as long as the property, the house can fit on the lot proper, then it's, it's okay to go with it.
But it cannot have an extended porch or anything that meets into that 60-foot clearance. So if, if you build the property, that, that clearance is from the street to the building.
Right.
So any, anything that hangs over, like a porch or whatever that extends out past the front of that, that impedes your 60-foot clearance issue.
So with the parking, though, install in front of it, I think it's back far enough.
Anything attached to the house, like a porch, a deck, or anything that comes out past the front of the property would be an attachment to the house, can't impede into that 60-foot clearance area. That's the way it reads in the, in the UDO.
I guess I don't, I'm not, not understanding what you're saying as far as a 60-foot clearance.
From, you're supposed to have 60 foot.
On the front, front of your property, the width of the property should be 60-foot wide.
From the street end, you're supposed to have 60-foot of frontage, is what it says.
Well, I always thought it was at least 20-foot frontage.
I think on the table is C7, I'm seeing 15 feet minimum front. Is that what you're?
Well, I'll see where I, can't remember where I, I should have brought it with me.
It should be on C7. I thought it was 15 feet.
See what that says.
Where's that?
That's in your UDO ordinance.
3052, okay, here we are.
Says 50 foot.
Oh, so it's, that's frontage, so that's linear feet of the roadway.
Okay.
So that's like, if the street's here, that's, that 50 feet is.
And it's supposed to be 60.
It's supposed.
It, it, it's required to be 60, but there's gonna be lots in Frankfurt that won't meet that. But if they can make the house fit and meet all the setbacks, then, then they're okay to go. And still have the proper amount of square footage in the lot.
How, how does this fit as far as the clearance between what Gracie's building and the house sitting exactly east of that?
It's at least 12 foot off the property line.
Any other questions for Don?
The only other one, which is kind of an odd one, it talked about B residential, no more than six single-family dwellings per acre. Just looking at the numbers, this would be like putting, divide the acre into six, you get about this parcel size. So we would be taking the six units per acre and making it seven for this one area. You did mention that there was others, other rental properties in the area?
There are.
Do we know where those are in their proximity?
I do. So just, if you continue west on Green Street on Rossville Avenue, there's a big white house there on the southwest corner. That's listed in Beacon as a, as a two-family dwelling. And then if you.
I think we need to reorient that. Are you talking about the house in the southwest corner?
Yep, southwest corner. South, no, southeast corner.
Southwest.
There's a big.
Southwest, yeah, the big white house.
Big white house.
Yeah.
That's, that's listed in Beacon as two-family dwelling. And then if you go Rossville towards Kiger Street, is that, what street is that? That's not Palmer, is it? That, there's a, there's a brown house that sits there, that's also a multifamily dwelling.
Green Street.
If you go down Rossville Avenue from, towards Kiger, what's the street that you cross over before you get to Kiger?
I think it's Paris.
Paris. So it's, it's, that too sits on the southeast, southwest corner of Paris. That's a multifamily dwelling. And then the single family is about two houses or three houses east of this property. It's owned by a couple people that don't, they, they purchased property, but it's still listed as a single family. So it's just, I figure it's a single-family rental since the people who own it don't live
So there are at least two other duplexes within, I would say, for, one would be within two, and then one would be within.
Yeah, the next block, the next block down.
Up and over.
Yeah.
So the only other really question I had was, was on that. It seems like we would be driving that a little farther away from the direction we want, since there's already one duplex there, which would exceed the six units per acre.
Yeah, I, I'll, I'll tell you, I, I told Gracie this, this week, and I said, you know, I almost called you and said no to this because I was having a difficult time finding multifamily dwellings. I'm not gonna be a kind of guy that's gonna drop a duplex in a, in a, in a B residential if there's no other rental properties in the area. And so I always try to check that out, and when I saw at least three within this perimeter, I'm thinking, okay, so I'm thinking it's okay to add a duplex to it. I mean, Gracie does a great job at her building, and it makes it very, very nice, a property or a nice complex. So I felt like it was okay to, to then try to do findings in favor of.
I would, I would, I would almost wonder if it, I'm reading it the opposite direction. If you have a bunch of duplexes, this is trying to, like the way the UDO is saying is you should limit it. You should limit the number of duplexes.
But when I read this, when I read the, the, let me get the right one here.
I'm on C3.
Number, number four on the findings, it says, "The proposal shall use produce or a total environmental effect that is consistent with and not harmful to." So if, I'm, I'm reading that as, hey, if there are not any residential or duplexes or rental properties in the neighborhood, then why would you add and be harmful to the neighborhood with all single-family dwellings? And so being the fact, that's what, that's what, this always would make me start looking for multifamily dwellings in the neighborhood, to say, okay, since they're already there in the B residential, adding one more or two more, I don't know if it would affect the neighborhood in a, in a negative way.
So speaking specifically about the density, the difference between B residential, which is medium density, and C residential, which is high density, is two units. So the density should, in, in B residential, it says, "Density should not exceed six single-family dwelling units per acre." When you go down to C residential, it extends that to density may exceed eight per acre. So we're like, you know what I'm saying? Once you hit that tipping point, now we're, we're switching over to a more high-density, would be my thought.
The other, the other concern that I, that I, I have is our comprehensive plan. When that comprehensive plan was written, it said 21.5% of the housing in the city of Frankfurt is multifamily complexes.
Supposed to eliminate eight a year.
Yep, it's supposed to eliminate eight a year, and it also says not to encourage more.
Yeah, well, I'm, I can now give you, and, and could have addressed it and should have in my findings, that a residential survey was taken in place, and Frankfurt is in need of everything it can get, from workforce housing for more rental properties to single-family dwellings in itself. So all the above is now needed in the city of Frankfurt.
I'm not doubting we need them, but I, I'm more of having a single-family dwelling and building more of them. We got plenty of lots sitting around that we could build single-family dwellings and use them for rental.
Yeah, well.
I'm just talking about the multifamily. I'm not talking about single-family.
Well, well, my take is, is that multifamily dwellings are in need in the, in the city of, well, you're looking at maybe a, a, a complex going in out by Metal Brook between Turtle Creek and, and, and Wilshire Court Apartments. It could have up to 100 multifamily units in there. I know it's a different, that's a different, different area of town.
That puts it in a different classification.
But what I'm saying is, is as far as having a duplex put in, rental properties is, is something that is still required or needed in the city of Frankfurt, and in a form of a manner, I don't know what she's gonna charge for rent in this, that's up to them, but it is a, a needed item for the city of Frankfurt right now. I think when the UDO was put together, and I don't know if it was amended or, or a new one was put in place, when it required the, the, our office to remove eight a year, which is impossible, I mean, you can't, that was a, that was a very poor statement to be put in the comprehensive plan, and, but we're.
The council come back and said, there's no way.
Yeah, I mean, how, how are you gonna go, you gonna start closing them down, or, I mean, so.
What that, what that, what that was in there for was there's a lot of illegal conversions as far as multifamily dwellings. And that was put in there because of the illegal conversions like the one down here on Washington Street, and there was a couple others. We did get rid of a couple of them.
Mm-hmm.
And there was a couple, I think we even had them to convert it back to legal, legal occupancy. So, yeah, that, that was something that I didn't even agree with it, and I was on the committee, but they decided they wanted it in there, so that's the way it was.
You know, when I read it, I'm thinking, man, that's impossible.
So I, I would say this is, this is kind of just what we're looking for. We're, we're getting a, we're getting a decent duplex built in a decent area, and it's gonna have the, the required amount of off-street parking, which is the big problem that we have with all of our, all of our units in town is the off-street parking, and she's made, she's made a, a good proposal, in my opinion, to get the off-street parking taken care of.
Yeah, it's, it's now high on the agenda, of course, it's always been, and with, with Charles coming to the last meeting or the meeting that we had with the house on Fourth Street, if somebody doesn't reach, I mean, I'm already talking to an org, a group that's looking at the Peddlers Alley to potentially put apartments in that. They don't have enough off-street parking, and I told them, hey, we're not going to the BZA because it's not gonna pass. So, but that's what I like about it. I mean, you set the perimeters, I'm gonna go by what you guys decide to do, so that if somebody comes to me, it's like, it's not gonna work. So in this case, I think that we're, we're in pretty good shape as far as.
I'm not, I'm not saying I'm against it. I'm just saying we've got, we've got one, our comprehensive plan and our UDOs are not reading basically the same.
We're getting ready to amend it, the comprehensive plan. It's coming before the Plan Commission, and it, it will, this, the amended version will, will line up.
Yeah, of course. I've got a copy of the old, of the comprehensive plan, of course, I was on that. That took a lot of time and work to put that thing together.
Well, it's taken us a little time to amend it, so.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just, what we've got in front of us is what we gotta read.
Okay, it was a good discussion here. We'll now go ahead and turn discussion, open it to the public. At this time, we'll go ahead and take any questions from the public. Just be sure to remember and state your guys' name and address for our record, please. So at this time, we'll go ahead and take public comment.
You want to go?
Yes, please.
I said it was a trip.
Just state your name for us, please.
William Bertram, address 705 West Green Street. So I'm not actually even here to argue against a duplex. I just want to make sure that it's done properly, kind of what sounds like you guys are wanting as well. To that point, the blueprint that I saw shows side by side, does not show multi-level. So, and, and Gracie, thank you for being here to answer that, because I, like, looking at it, I was like, oh, 720 square feet, that's cracker box. So the other thing, I guess my other concern here is the parking on what I have shows in the back, now we're potentially moving into the front. I wanna just make sure that everything gets nailed down to where it's done properly before we just say, yes, do it. And then all of a sudden, it becomes a mess. Cuz I am all for affordable housing, I'm mid-30s, I get it, it's not cheap, we need it, 100%. The other part of it too is, at that point, I don't want it to become like a high-density where two duplexes already, and I can speak to the rentals there. The rental, the one rental house is actually owned by Jack Taylor, who passed away, his son now owns it, a single-family. The multi-family dwelling, the big white house on the corner of Rossville, only one person has lived in it for 30 years now.
Been a long time.
Yes, long, long time, wonderfully, wonderful lady. So I just wanna make sure that if we're going to do it, we do it properly, and we're not looking at this, and then all of a sudden, it's totally different, and then by the time it's built, it's something else, it's different, and, and, and that's nothing on your building skills, just making sure that we, we get to an understanding of what it will be, make sure that it fits, make sure that it's not just to get as, hey, I, you know, we've got a duplex, I've got two renters that are paying me every month, awesome, we did it. I wanna make sure that it's done right. And to that point, with the way rent is costing now, that is the price of, essentially it's cheaper to buy a home at this point. But wanting to make sure that if it is gonna be done, that it, it's not something to where it's outpriced or underpriced to the point of potentially making the neighborhood less of what it was. I guess is the best way to put it.
He brings up, and I think, I don't mean to jump, he brings up an excellent point in, in that what we're approving in here actually happens. How, how is that insured? Is that the, the permitting process, or the-
Yeah, so the plan that you, is that, the plan, I don't know. The plan that you have in front of you is not the kinda plan that we would take when she comes in to get her permit, and she doesn't, she'll have a, a regular set of blueprints that'll come out for this property. This is just kinda letting you, show you how it fits on the property, because that's what you're concerned about. You're concerned about making sure that it's on the property properly, that we've got our off-street parking. And I wanna talk a little bit about the off-street parking. So the off-street parking, when it comes off the street, will be required to have a concrete, what I call entry, or pad, that goes from the curb to the backside of the sidewalk. And once it gets there, if they wanna make that gravel, they can, if they wanna make it a hard surface, they can do that. I, I can't do anything with that. But Gracie usually builds really pretty homes. Right now, the homes that are, that she's built are a single-family, and they kinda all look alike, but the good thing about them is that they're not side by side, they, they're spread out within the community. And I think that this will be an addition that'll look nice to, for your neighborhood. But it'll be Rob Bog, our building inspector, who will make sure that everything gets put in properly and to code.
Okay, cuz, yeah, I mean, cuz like, Gracie, you've been behind us for a while now, no issues? Met your dog one time, cuz it got in our yard, nice dog.
I'm not rid of that dog.
But yeah, so like, my concern is like, right, we approve it, and then it changes. I, I just wanna make sure that it's done to the point of, it's nice, it, it's not just to get rent money, it's, you know, hey, it's here, we wanna build the neighborhood back up. The other part is, everyone in that neighborhood is very elderly, including my mom, who I take care of. So as we start to build it up, I wanna make sure it doesn't become an issue of, that road especially, like Fourth of July, TPA Park, you can't do anything on it, it is like non-stop. So if there's ever any sort of event happening over on this side of town, Green Street's kind of that funnel for that side of town to come over. I just wanna make sure that, you know, all that's thought of before we just stamp approval and say, hey, yep, go ahead, and then all of a sudden, it looks way different than, than what we thought. Just because to that point, you're still kinda thinking about how we want it to look, where the driveways go, everything else. So, yep, that was all I had, any questions for me, anything?
Thank you, Will. Okay, hearing no other discussion, we'll go ahead and close.
All right, one more question.
Sorry.
These are gonna be front-facing entries?
So the house will be facing to Green Street?
Okay.
And there'll be parking, we have not decided whether we want a garage in there, depends on-
I mean, it looks like you have enough room in the back, you could even put a driveway to the side.
I wanna leave the back open for like large, just so the kids will play or whatever. Because we always believe, I mean, even the kids, even the kids don't like playing nowadays, because they're all their hormones at that. What if they wanna play soccer, or they wanna play basketball, or whatever in the back, they have somewhere to play. So I wanna leave the back not for parking, just for like-
Do you plan on putting a fence around the, but I know obviously the property next to there, the fence is not, not great.
It's falling, yeah. No, we're not, we're not gonna put a fence, it's just gonna be the loud space on each side. And the, the property is pretty big, so on the front, there'll be about 60 feet of ground before you get to that show. 50, 55 to 60 feet, something like that, and the back will still be like 50 feet.
You mentioned putting a garage in the front.
It'll be, it'll be a garage if we decide to do it, we don't really wanna do it because we don't wanna-
It's still gonna impede your 50-foot clearance in the front if you put a garage in there. You can't have anything in there that's gonna obstruct the street view.
We're gonna be on the, we're gonna need the setbacks with whatever we go with. The setbacks, I think in the front is 20 feet, on the back it's 20 feet or 15, something like that.
But Gracie, what he's saying, and it's true, you can't put a building, accessory building in front of your, of the front of your-
Structure.
Your structure, your main principal round, so if you put a garage on it, it has to be to a side, so that-
It can't be like the ones that we build now that the garage is on the bottom.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's what we do.
The house to the house, and then the, there's a garage, and then you walk into the front, and the garage is right next to it.
As long as the garage does not sit in front of the structure.
No, no, it's part of the house.
Be part of the house, then you have a basement or whatever underneath the house, ain't even go up.
So, so are you thinking like three levels, so a garage, then one unit?
It'll be, it'll be just two levels, there'll be a garage if we build a garage, which we probably will not. But if we do decide to go that way, there'll be the garage, living room, dining room, kitchen on the bottom part, and on the top part, here there's bathrooms, there'd be a bathroom on the bottom also, of course, yeah.
Okay, so roughly then, what would the size of the bottom unit be? Cuz in the top unit, it would be the whole size.
The whole house would not be more than 40 feet at all. It would be, we wanna keep it to 30-something, but it won't be on, on width.
Well, I'm, I'm thinking like square foot, cuz if, if you're gonna have like the driveway leading into the house, that cuts into the square, cuz if you do one level, two levels, you get that, what, 1,300 or 1,400 square foot of living space. But if you're gonna have the garage, the driveway leading into the bottom one, doesn't that cut into the square foot into the living space?
Yeah, and then that would be a little, little more sad, would you bring to the planning system?
We're not, we're not, we're not, we're looking at two plans, one has a garage, which is like the look of it, and the other one is just no garage.
And the no garage would just be one floor, would be one family, the second floor would be the second one, no?
So I, I can put some numbers on it, like going by a 6 by 8, oh, hold on, that's not right, nevermind. No, that was right, 16 by 8 for like a parking space. If, if they have like a single-car garage, 16 by 8, that's 128 square feet, so of the 1,440 minus 128, they're still over the 1,200 square foot.
Yeah, I guess I was thinking, yeah, so essentially you're looking at two sides of each having downstairs and upstairs. Okay, now, now I'm following along.
We don't, we don't like the fact that personally, I don't think we wanna rent a house where I have to go upstairs to go up to my apartment, I would rather have going through the front door, what if I'm older, I can have a bed on the bottom, whatever. Older people, and the younger people can have a-
Okay, I was thinking the second floor would be one unit, okay, yes, I make sense.
And so just, just for your information, as, like if we move forward with this, that would fall back into the building, the building services office to ensure that the square footage is met and all of those details, once the plan comes along.
Yeah, I just, I, like, I've driven past places where it seems like it's, and, and I wouldn't think that this is the case here, because obviously there's a better plan for it, but just like two, two trailers put together, a smash, it's a duplex, and it's like, that's-
That definitely wouldn't get-
And the other, the only other question I had, Gracie, are you gonna do anything with the sidewalks? This gentleman brought up about the elderly people and handicapped people going up and down the sidewalk. Are you gonna do something with the sidewalks or-
All the properties we have required, what a sidewalk's around.
That's good, good to know, thank you.
The sidewalk near that house, right now, is actually pretty decent as is, compared to some other areas.
If we're gonna build a new house, he normally likes to tear down the, the, the important, that little piece right there, just because-
Any other questions for public discussion? Hearing none, we will go ahead and close the public discussion. Go ahead and open up any other discussion from the board members? Hearing none, we'll close discussion from the board. Go ahead and call for a motion. And open that to the board at this time.
I'll make the motion, we need one, I'll make a motion that we approve the 25, 2025-003. With, with the findings.
Second.
Okay, we have first and a second, roll call, please.
Mike Nichols.
Aye.
Scott Highlander.
Aye.
Charles Bates.
Aye.
Sam Payne.
Aye.
Isaac Chavez.
Aye.
Congratulations, it passes. Moving forward, go ahead and take a look at any other old business.
Can't think of anything right now. I, I did say before that we were planning a special accept, or a special meeting on the 26th of March. I think that's gonna get canceled. And, and I believe, do we not have something already lined up for April, Grace, or do we not? We're waiting for applications.
We're waiting for applications.
Yeah. So April's meeting will be in the air as of right now. I'm telling you, Sam, as you well know, it comes into your office, and until you get the application, you don't concern yourself.
I was gonna say, if it is, I can be able to pin that with you, cuz I've had discussions with that. And if it's the same address, you and I talk-
Oh, that's right, that's right, okay.
Any other old business?
I just had a question for Don, what did you say, we had a meeting, but we can't, why did we cancel it?
We, we may be canceling it because it may not be going into play to where we need to have a special exception for something that's not gonna happen. I'll set the whole thing up, so the people who are going to look at purchasing or getting the police department, the old police station-
That's right, you guys talked about it earlier, I forgot about that.
Have to have a, a option signed, and for the option to be signed, they also have to have the zoning taken care of. Well, that too is in a central business district, a new central business district for downtown, which requires any apartment processes to come before you again as a special exception. And that may not happen now, if, if, if the program doesn't follow through.
I forgot what you, I did, thank you.
Anything else? Take a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.